Ladies and gentlemen, the May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Anarondle County Council is now in session. The purpose of this meeting is to hear testimony on the proposed FY twenty-three county general and Board of Education budget. Please pause for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Pickard this evening.
May we pray to administer that which is just in all policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda for this evening? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Heedler seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget bills for the benefit of our members of the public.
Does this sound? Bill number thirty-seven twenty-two, an ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anarondle County. Bill number thirty-eight twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, and waterways improvement districts. Bill number thirty-nine twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-two twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-one twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-two twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-three twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-four twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-five twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-six twenty-two, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-seven twenty-two, an ordinance concerning finance taxation and budget income tax. Bill number forty-eight twenty-two, an ordinance concerning private property tax and semi-annual payment service charge.
Thank you. At this time, we have a few representatives from various county groups who will make a brief statement on tonight's on the budget this evening. First, we have Chris Trumbauer, who is the county budget officer.
I'm Chair, members of the county council. For the record, I'm Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarondle County. Thank you for the opportunity to give a brief overview of County Executive Stuart Pittman's proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. On March fourteenth, Moody's announced that it was upgrading the county's credit rating to AAA for the first time, joining standard embers and giving Anarondle County the highest possible rating. The ratings increase was the result of a deliberate and strategic effort to strengthen the fiscal foundation of the county. The proposed budget before you continues that effort. Last year, County Executive Pittman proposed, and the county council approved, a fiscally conservative budget that got the county back on track as we emerged from the COVID pandemic. Since that time, the county has enjoyed a strong and robust local economy. Local income tax revenue is expected to exceed our FY twenty-two budget estimates by forty-nine million dollars. The county real estate market continued to be red hot, and our recordation and transfer tax revenue is now forecast to be sixty-five million dollars higher than budgeted. Combined with cost savings across county government, this results in a county fund balance of more than two hundred and sixty-two million dollars. This year's proposed general fund budget is two billion, one hundred fifty-seven million, four hundred fifty thousand, and five hundred dollars, an increase of two hundred eighty-four point four million from the adopted budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. A more appropriate comparison involves subtracting out the hundred and fifty-four point six million of incremental fund balance and one-time revenue, which results in a one hundred twenty-nine point eight dollar, uh, million dollar increase from fiscal year twenty-two. This increase is equivalent to seven point four percent, which is nearly identical to the January Consumer Price Index figure of seven point five percent. The proposed budget includes an income tax cut for all county taxpayers by utilizing a new progressive local income tax structure. It was authorized by the Tax Relief for Working Families Act. This budget will lower the income tax rate on the first fifty thousand dollars of taxable income for every taxpayer from two point eight one percent to two point seven percent. The rate for income above fifty thousand dollars remain unchanged at two point eight one percent, which is still the fourth lowest rate among Maryland's twenty-four county jurisdictions. Anarondle County has a property tax revenue cap that limits revenue to an annual increase equal to the January Consumer Price Index or four point five percent, whichever is less. For fiscal year twenty-three, that corresponding tax rate would be ninety-six point three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. However, in the proposed budget, the county executive has set the rates three cents lower than that at ninety-three point three cents. This represents an average homeowner savings of one hundred dollars. The proposed rate keeps our property tax rate significantly lower than any of our central Maryland neighbors. We are able to provide this tax relief while simultaneously strengthening the county's fiscal foundation. The FY twenty-three budget makes several investments to secure our long-term fiscal stability. The proposed budget includes a twenty-three point five million dollar contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund, also known as the Rainy Day Fund. This will result in an estimated balance of one hundred thirty-two point seven million dollars of reserves at the end of fiscal year twenty-three. With the support of this council, we will have grown the balance of the Rainy Day Fund by sixty-one point two million dollars since fiscal year twenty nineteen. The budget fully funds our annual pension contribution and includes an additional sixteen point five million dollar one-time contribution to reduce our future liability. The proposed budget also fully funds the annual contribution to our other post-employment benefits fund, known as OPEB. Two years ago, in the fiscal year twenty-one budget, the county dramatically reduced its revenue forecast due to the COVID pandemic, and as a result, created a modest twenty-four point seven million dollar structural deficit by utilizing its fund balance to cover some recurring costs. Last year, we reduced that amount to nineteen point nine million, and this year, I am pleased to report that the proposed county budget completely eliminates the structural deficit. This means that every dollar of recurring costs will be covered with recurring revenue. As to what is being funded in the proposed budget, I believe there is much to celebrate. The proposed budget includes eight hundred thirty-four point seven million dollars of county funding for the Board of Education, a fifty million dollar increase from last year, and the largest incremental increase in county history. The budget prioritizes several key components of the Board of Education's request. First, we propose fully funding the compensation package for educators with a step increase and a four percent cost of living increase for all units. It also includes the final back steps for units two through six. Second, we make critical investments in special education. The budget includes the seventy new special ed positions required by the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and also proposes forty-nine additional positions on top of that. The budget also fully funds the request for twenty-nine new social emotional learning positions to meet the growing need for behavioral health services in our schools, and it funds twenty new English language development positions and three new bilingual facilitators. One of the other upcoming requirements of the state blueprint legislation is full-day kindergarten. This budget proposes forty-eight new pre-K positions to convert half-day programs to full-day pre-K classrooms. And finally, the budget includes one hundred and forty new classroom teacher positions, including the final year of staffing required to fully open Crofton High School. All told, the proposed budget contains four hundred and twenty-four new positions in the public school system, many of which are either required or will be required in coming years under state law. Anarondle Community College, ranked number one in the nation by Forbes Magazine last year, will receive forty-seven point four million in county funding, an increase of one million dollars from last year. Our library system will receive twenty-seven point three million of general fund support, an increase of two and a half million compared to last year. Part of this funding will support the new kindergarten readiness program, and I'm sure Mr. Alt will tell you all about that in a few minutes. This budget represents a big step forward for Department of Recreation and Parks, which is proposed to receive eight new positions. In fiscal year two thousand and eight, before the Great Recession, the department had a hundred and thirteen merit positions. Over the next five years, the department lost positions each year until it was left with only eighty-five merit positions in fiscal year thirteen. With the proposed eight new positions in this budget, the department will finally have recovered to the staffing levels before the recession, with a hundred and sixteen proposed merit positions in the general fund. I hope the council will agree these positions are much needed, as the department has several new parks and facilities, and we anticipate taking acquisition of the property soon to be known as Crownesville Hospital Memorial Park in the Green Heart of our county. Similarly, new positions are being added for the departments of both central services and aging and disabilities. Each of these departments has taken on new county facilities and services over the past year. For public safety and our first responders, the proposed budget of three hundred and ninety-four million dollars adds seven new positions in the police department, three in the fire department, one new position in the sheriff department, which adds to the three positions that we added mid-year in fiscal year twenty-two, and one for the Office of Emergency Management. The budget also includes five additional positions in the state's attorney's office, four to support the body line camera program, and a licensed clinical professional counselor for the Child Services Justice Program. Other notable new initiatives include two inspector positions for the Office of Planning and Zoning, as well as a new regional planning. Two new planning positions are also proposed for the Department of Transportation. The county successfully negotiated agreements with all eleven of its bargaining units. The proposed budget also includes a four point five percent cost of living adjustment for non-represented employees and funding for a four point five percent increase for contractual workers effective upon renewal of their annual contracts. For the county enterprise funds, the trash and recycling rates will remain unchanged from this year, as will this county's stormwater fee. The water and sewer rates are each proposed with a modest five percent increase, which is below the current rate of inflation. With respect to the fiscal year twenty-three capital budget, County Executive Pittman is proposing to reduce the amount of new borrowing for the first time in county history, from a hundred and seventy million dollars of annual new debt authority to one hundred sixty million dollars. This represents a reduction of sixty million dollars over the course of the six-year capital program. Despite this reduction, the capital budget keeps all major projects on track and includes several new initiatives. This is accomplished by deploying two hundred and five million dollars of the county's fund balance into the capital budget program. The entire six-year capital program remains five point three million dollars under our debt affordability guidelines. Overall, the total capital budget for fiscal twenty-three is five hundred seventy-two point two million, which includes all funding sources. The largest component, of course, is the Board of Education with a hundred and ninety-eighty-nine point two million dollars. This is the first time in history that the county is proposing to fully fund the board's upcoming year capital request. Rather than go through a list of individual projects like I do every year, I'll just say that this year, if the board requested it, we funded it. Notable new county projects in the, in the, um, proposed FY twenty-three capital budget include three point five million dollars for New Crownesville Nonprofit Center, four point four million dollars to begin eight new transportation projects across the county, two point five million dollars to begin a new joint nine-one-one operations center, two million dollars to start work on a new police firearms training facility, and one point three million dollars in planning and design funding for two new parks at Tanyard Springs and South Shore. The budget also includes two million dollars for the Department of Recreation and Parks to upgrade twenty-five county playgrounds to be more accessible to people with disabilities. In closing, I thank you for this opportunity to present an overview of the budget. The county executive and the entire budget team look forward to working with the county council and the auditor as we work to strike a budget to meet the priority needs of our county residents. Copies of the entire budget, including budget highlights, are available on the Budget Office website at www.aacounty.org. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Trumbauer. Our next speaker is Skip Old, who is the CEO of Anarondle County Public Libraries.
Well, good evening, Chair Roddian, Vice Chair Pruski, and council members. My name is Skip Alt, and I have the great honor of serving as the library's chief executive officer. Is this working right? Our budget request each year expresses the best ways that our library system can meet the needs of your constituents, who are, of course, our customers. This year is especially important to me because three of you plan to leave county council for greener pastures after this term. I have vivid memories of meeting Jessica Hare in two thousand and eighteen at the Edgewater Library, Sarah Lacy at the Severn Library, and Andrew Pruski some years earlier at Odenton Library. I want to thank you all so much for all you've done and your support over the years and for your love of libraries. I'm here this evening to advocate for full funding of the library's requests in the county executive's proposed budget. For many years, the library has provided weekly kindergarten readiness programs in all our branches and in the community. These special storytimes empower parents and caregivers to become their preschooler's first teacher and to set their kids on the path to academic success. Many people who could benefit most from these programs are not able to get to our libraries, so we want to expand our reach. The county executive has recommended six hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars to fund a formalized kindergarten readiness outreach program. This initiative will provide us with vehicles and staff to get out more frequently into the communities that need us. We also urge your support for a proposed thirty thousand nine hundred dollar request to purchase menstrual products and dispensers for all of our libraries. Period poverty is real, as we see every Saturday at the community pantry that's held at the Discoveries Library at Westfield and Apple's Mall. At the pantry, we give out menstrual products, diapers, and healthcare items. If anyone in the audience wants to contribute, you can find out how at aacpl.net/pantry. We also need your support for a number of cybersecurity initiatives, some of which are recommended for, uh, for funding by the county executive. At my presentation to council a couple of weeks ago, council member Lacy asked what requests are not recommended that would be our highest priority. We need a position dedicated to cybersecurity in order to mitigate today's environment of constant and complex threats. Second, we need a position that improves our customers' digital experience with the library. This area of service has grown exponentially since two thousand and twenty, and we just cannot meet all the demand. So I want to thank you for considering these two mission-critical positions. The very last thing I want to mention is our new libraries. The amazing new Revere Beach Library will open late this fall or winter. And then, starting in July two thousand and twenty-three, selecting an architect to design, we will begin selecting an architect to design the new Glen Burnie Library. Both of these libraries are going to be fantastic, and they are critically needed by the communities that they serve. I want to thank the entire county council for your continued support of our libraries, and I appreciate and thank the public who are here in the audience here at North County and those of you watching from home tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alt. Our next speaker is Russell Leoni, who is the president of the Teachers Association of Anarondle County, Ms. Tack.
Good evening, Chairperson Roddian, Vice Chair Pruski, and members of the council. My name is Russell Leoni. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I'm an elementary school teacher currently serving as president of the Teachers Association of Anarondle County. This evening, I'm speaking on behalf of all Unit One educators to call for your support in fully funding the education budget in order to empower our educators, support successful students, and connect our school communities. Last year, together, we finally resolved a decade of inequities that held over three thousand educators back, being paid a wage less than their credited years of experience. And your budget showed Anarondle County teachers, special educators, related service providers, counselors, literacy teachers, PPWs, and many others, education professionals in our county, the respect that they deserve for their dedicated service to our students and school communities. This year, the budget that's before you continues that respect. A four percent COLA and one step increase will go a long way toward empowering, excuse me, toward ensuring we recruit and retain highly qualified educators in Anarondle County. By empowering educators with the ability to care for themselves and their families, we can remain competitive as a leader in education across Maryland. County Executive Stuart Pittman has proposed a fair budget for public education, and we ask that the county council support fully funding this education budget. The budget also takes steps to support our students. By funding four hundred plus new positions, we can ensure our students' education continues at a quality level. The inability to hire substitutes and full-time teachers has been a problem for years. And when teachers are pulled to cover classes, they lose essential planning time for their students. We hope this new investment helps in a small way to show the respect for the work our educators do. The improvement in compensation and working conditions in this county will attract qualified candidates to fill all the newly funded positions. And finally, I know that this budget is a step toward building stronger connections within our community between educators, parents, community groups, and elected officials. Our elected leaders, many like you on the council, and educators work together to draft paths and now will implement the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. This budget takes into consideration many of the opportunities outlined in the blueprint. A four percent COLA is a step toward raising our starting salary to sixty thousand dollars, which we must do by two thousand and twenty-six, while also crediting our veteran educators for their service. We have seen a beautiful example of the partnership possible between our state union, President MSA Cheryl Ghost, and MSBE's Superintendent Mohamed Chadri, and how they coordinate around the implementation of Blueprint across the state. We have an opportunity in this budget to listen to our educators in their school buildings, who will be directly impacted by this funding. President Ghost wrote to the Board of Education this evening, where many of our members are also speaking tonight in support of maintenance of planning time, capping non-professional duties, protecting compensation for class coverage, and appropriately paying special educators and related service providers for the support of their students. She wrote, "If we are to bring about real meaningful change to educator, education teachers, those responsible for implementing the change, we must be included in the development of those same policies that will ultimately be charged with implementing." This budget will help us to focus on impacting that change. So I ask you to please fully fund the education budget as it has, it has been proposed to you, and also listen to the educators that are here tonight, who have reached out to you via testimony, and come visit our schools to see how this funding is and could be used to empower our educators, support the success of our students, and really allow us to connect to our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carmen Lita Mapple, who is the president of the Secretaries and Assistants Association of Anarondle County, also known as SEAP. Is Ms. Mapple present? Seeing no movement in the audience, we will go on to our next speaker, who is E. Picken, the president of the Association of Educational Leaders.
Good evening. Again, uh, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Pruski, and council members. It's my pleasure to speak before you again this evening. As I stated in my May ninth presentation to you, AEL is grateful for the opportunity to hear from us as it relates to the superintendent's budget and for any and all funding you provide to allow AACPS to function. I stated last time that AEL is in the process of negotiating for that which we have been owed since fifteen sixteen, the step for those of us who were not stepped out at that time. We have six individuals who were not stepped out at that year and are owed this step. The board is saying that these individuals who are now on our highest step, step forty, are not eligible to receive what they are owed. It is paramount that these individuals, along with all of the others who are eligible for this step, receive this pay increment. With super, with the insurmountable workload increase that has occurred over the last few years, those of us who are in supervisory capacity should be compensated for the amount of time we are being expected to extend beyond our contractual hours. Our contract says forty hours, however, the majority of us are working well into eighty hours plus per week, which includes our weekends. We are told, be sure to take care of yourselves, but we can't do that due to the expectations that have been placed on us. As a result, we are also asking that the council consider an increased amount of the superintendent's budget to cover a five percent COLA. I assure you have questions, but I want to share some information with you that I shared with the Board of Education. A review of salary increases over the last four years for Unit Six, that's the superintendent's executive stat, have received over twenty-five percent increases in salary. One individual in this unit has received a forty-nine percent increase in his salary. This is outrageous when you consider that the differential between those of us who are in supervisory capacities in the school and those we supervise is considerably narrower, with some teachers now making more than those of us with increased responsibilities due to our roles. I explained last time that the negotiations are truly not negotiations. The board does not negotiate. My actual warning is that we are voluntold. We are going to get. They waste their time bringing us back to the table only to continue to say no, but they will say they negotiated. This has been going on for eight years. School-based administrators, instructional coordinators, and, and special assistants to the superintendent deserve better anymore. We are hoping that you will be able to find some funding requesting, and specifically earmark it for those purposes only and no other. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Picken. At this time, we would like to hear from members of the public on the budget. Please remember that if you testified on a Monday, May ninth, you may not testify again tonight. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. A Spanish interpreter is available here tonight for anyone who needs this. I will call people in small groups, and I will ask you to come down to this front row, and then we have a microphone on each side. When I call your name, come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And I am going to start with Eliana Shields. Next will be Brian Jamison, Kathy Ware, Kathleen Guile, R.J. Porach, Christopher Miriam. Uh, we'll go with those six for now. Ms. Shields, you may proceed whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Eliana Shields, and I'm currently a senior at Annapolis High School. I have been a part of Annapolis Junior Rowing for the past five years, first as a rower and a coxswain. But my time with this team has been anything but linear. After developing a debilitating condition over a year ago, I struggled to hold on to the sport I had loved since I first sat in the boat. One of the first challenges I faced was being able to row without fainting. Luckily, switching to the less physically demanding position of a coxswain allowed me to stay at the boat. But the task of trekking around the uncaved, steep slopes in order to access the water in our boats was no longer within my ability. Keep in mind, the only way I was able to get around school and graduate this year was through the use of my wheelchair. Thankfully, due to a generous donation of a golf cart to Annapolis Junior Rowing, I was able to finish my last season as an athlete on my team. This regained ability to get back in the boat and on the water gave me back my hope. It gave me a chance to be surrounded by my community and friends instead of being stuck in isolation. The ability to be just a hand's reach from the water not only reconnected me with nature, but myself, and a sense of independence I had long since lost. A truly accessible community launch for canoeers, kayakers, and anglers would not only allow me access to our beautiful waterways, but to anyone else in our community who is limited by their disability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brian Jamison. All right, I don't see Mr. Jamison. Kathy Ware.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Kathy Ware, and I am a rower. I am here to speak in favor of funding access for rowing at the Homeport site. As you know, there is currently no public access for rowers in Anarondle County, while access for other water sports is plentiful. I am a member of the Annapolis Rowing Club, having joined in two thousand and seventeen when I relocated to Maryland. I attended a Learn to Row Weekend that spring. I attended a Learn to Row weekend that spring and have been rowing with the evening group ever since, and I am hooked. I was 58 years old when I started rowing, and I have found masters rowing to be incredibly beneficial for my physical and mental well-being. Additionally, as a newcomer to the area, Annapolis Rowing Club has been extremely welcoming, and my being part of this community-oriented organization has helped me to integrate and feel connected. I echo some of the previous testimony you heard last week, citing the important opportunity Homeport represents to grow youth rowing programs. All Anaronda County youth deserve the chance to avail themselves of the fantastic benefits of rowing, as well as the potential for college scholarships, as you have probably already heard. We rowers have been good stewards of our current location with minimal impact to the area, and we have been respectful and cooperative neighbors to those individuals and groups with whom we share the water access at Gingerville Creek. There is no doubt that we would bring the same commitment to the Homeport site. We are well organized and have the numbers to not only maintain the space, but to improve it. Finally, I would like to address published concerns about the cost of our membership, which has led opponents to label our rowing club as elitist. Our fees are consistent with the annual cost for a gym membership. Also, our fees are out of necessity due to the enormous cost of renting space in an Annapolis marina. Our club is advocating for public space in order to fulfill our mission as a community-based organization to widely promote and advance rowing and make it available to any and all Anaronda County residents who are interested. Thank you for this opportunity, and I ask that you provide access to rowers at Homeport.
Thank you very much. Next will be Kathleen Guile. All right, seeing no movement, RJ Porath.
Good evening. I'm RJ Porath. I'm speaking on behalf of Annapolis Junior Rowing. We realize you are not considering anything regarding Homeport Park or rowing access. However, given recent news and other speakers, we felt it was important for you to hear who we are and what we are about. AJR is the only youth rowing team in our county. We have approximately 70% of our athletes, 8-12 graders, are from the public schools. The rest are from private or home schools. This is not a team or a sport supported by the county or any private school unlike others in the DC area and elsewhere. We have the lowest cost of any team I have encountered, and we have a scholarship loan for kids that want to row but need some help doing so. We currently row out of Camp Woodlands, the Girl Scout camp up by Annapolis High School. We have a year-to-year lease agreement with them, and we cannot do any improvements to that site. Our practices at Woodlands are in the fall and the spring, after school, and we're done by 7:00 PM. In the summer, we run a couple Learn to Row camps and summer practice sessions all morning. We welcome you to come visit and see what we do. The AJR Board has identified the lack of a long-term or permanent site as one of our biggest risks. When the time comes, we would love to have your support for water access at a place where our athletes can practice the sport that they love. This sport teaches an array of life skills like other activities and sports. However, unlike those, you are quite literally in the same boat. The skills and bonds developed are unlike any other sport that I have experienced. Two of my children have been a part of AJR, and it truly has made an incredible difference for them both physically and mentally. For whatever reason, kids find AJR, they find a home. Being part of a team where you can make friends, work hard, and compete in a fantastic sport has made all the difference in their lives and other kids' lives. Thank you for your time and service to our county.
Thank you very much. Next is Christopher Miriam.
Good evening. I'm Chris Miriam, a resident of Anaronda County and the incoming president of AJR's board. I'm proud to stand up here tonight among my fellow Annapolis representatives, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My goal tonight is to inform you of our ongoing efforts to enhance access and inclusion in rowing for people with physical or cognitive disabilities. We are eager to explore Homeport as a permanent home for rowing as it could represent the final piece in this puzzle for us. It will open doors to adaptive rowing for athletes of all ages by offering the vehicle access and terrain grades necessary for safe, easy access and exit by athletes with disabilities on a scale and at a professional level that will promote greater diversity and inclusion in the rowing community and county water sports. Through our ongoing community outreach, particularly in our Learn to Row offerings, we have received demand for adaptive rowing experiences from families of athletes with disabilities. An established 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, we have validated the scope and sustained nature of this demand in our local area and have sought lessons learned in safely providing such activities from other service providers. Geographic and facility limitations, however, showed us immediately why this would be a small group in which to learn in the county. So we took it upon ourselves to learn as we go. This led us to active engagement with therapeutic program coordinators at the military hospitals in the area and partnership with Annapolis Rowing Club, also a 501(c)(3), to establish our program, providing experiences in rowing for the community of wounded service members and their families in the region. We are building these partnerships through membership and established networks of adaptive sports providers. We look forward to working with you as well in this very worthwhile effort to broaden opportunities for people in Anaronda County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I would call down our next six speakers. Corinne Emerson, Christopher Path, Kim Bycar, Katari Cruz, Heather Thomas, and Chris Rivera. You can come down and sit in the front row, and when it is your turn, come up to the microphone for your two minutes. And Ms. Emerson may come straight to the mic.
Good evening, council. My name is Corinne Emerson. I'm a resident of Crofton. My son is a second grader at Crofton Elementary School. I am also the secretary of the Annapolis County Public School Special Education Citizen Advisory Council, or CCAP. I am speaking tonight both as a parent and on behalf of our special education families. AACPS is currently experiencing a critical shortage of special education teachers, TSA, and other related support staff. Many of our special education students, including my friend Mr. Wimhamsdorff, missed essential services during the pandemic. But the school system's obligations under federal IDEA law did not go away. Many families are owed compensatory and recovery services to make up for a hospital at any time, yet we lack the staff to properly provide them. On a more personal level, I am also a parent. My son has received special education services from AACPS since age two. Our son was initially identified as having a reading deficit by his kindergarten teacher, and then COVID closed schools halfway through my son's kindergarten year. We had dedicated TSA who met with our son two times a week during the early weeks of virtual schooling to help him with his reading. Our son is currently receiving special education services for reading. Please support special education in this year's budget. Our families deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Christopher Path.
I've been a resident of Annapolis County since 89, growing up in Riva and moving to Arnold after graduation. I started rowing with the Annapolis Rowing Club on my summer breaks during college in 2003. I really wish I knew about the juniors program here when I was in high school, and maybe I would have if it were a public facility. To those that would oppose Annapolis Rowing Club and Juniors Rowing Club moving to Homeport, I would ask that your practice would be all preached to our kids: Share. We are talking about a public space after all, one that will be used as intended. Anaronda County is blessed to have a 500 miles of shoreline. There are over 20 county parks to launch car-top oaks, but there are zero public locations for launching storing grower shells. Our rowing club is not looking to usurp anyone. We are simply asking for the county to provide spaces to store and launch our boats that are too long to be car-topped by joining other paddlers at the 25-acre Homeport Farm Park. We do not need a Taj Mahal structure to operate. Anyone that's been to our current site can clearly see that. Our rowing club is a nonprofit organization that has been doing good in the community for years. And juniors programs for high schoolers, which provide opportunities for college scholarships and masters programs for adults, we also provide adapted cancer survivor and Learn to Row programs. Our adapted program is the first and still only in the state to be certified by US Rowing for adaptive instruction. This means that injured service members and individuals with mental and physical disabilities are able to participate in the sport, bolstering the quality of their lives, those of their teammates, and communities. Our Strix for Survivors program helps cancer survivors achieve the highest potential in physical function, pain relief, and quality of life. It provides a fun, safe, and supportive environment with the ultimate goal of proving that beating cancer is more than just living through it. It's about thriving beyond. That's just a small sample of how we've been giving back to the community for years. Imagine what we could do together with a little help from the local government when we don't have to direct the majority of our funds to rent.
Thank you very much. And my apologies for the sound issues. Luckily, I think all of us up here were able to hear you just fine. Next is Kim Bycar.
Good evening, council. So members, Ms. Kim Bycar and I reside at 337 Oak District Road. As a 40-year resident of Anaronda County, I have served as an educator for 40 years with AACPS, 26 years as an elementary school counselor. I come to you on behalf of the eight National Board Certified School Counselors who will not be receiving the salary enhancement offered to our NBCTs by AACPS. This is inequitable as we meet the criteria set by MSDE and AACPS. We respectfully request funding of the $10,000 salary enhancement from the county council for one year. MSDE has allowed school districts to define who will receive the funding. MSDE and AACPS include us as instructional staff. I have direct instructional contact with at least 80% of our student body, of 299 students each week, teaching the AACPS school counseling curriculum and delivering direct small group instruction as set by COMAR. Yet we will not be provided with the salary enhancement we have earned. There are 16 NBCT certification categories, and the only category AACPS is not providing the salary enhancement to is school counseling. I was encouraged by AACPS to pursue the rigorous process of becoming nationally board certified, which has been strongly supported by the county council through the years. National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides many academic and social emotional benefits to all stakeholders and schools. As such, we have been provided with a small stipend for achieving NBCT through previous budgets approved by the Anaronda County Council. County council members, where can you find this one-time funding? It can be found in the funds provided by you but not spent for the many teaching positions in AACPS that were not filled for this academic year. MSDE and AACPS have adopted the inequitable practice to not provide the $10,000 salary enhancement for school counselors. Please, county council members, don't do the same to us, too. Fund the $10,000 salary enhancement with school counselors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to check in with our sound technician. Is there a possibility of switching out a microphone? Oh, okay. Oh, I think our Madam Secretary is already... I'm just going to take a brief pause before we go on to the next speaker. Testing. Okay. So for everybody else who's going to speak, I think it is important that you actually maintain a distance, sort of like I am. Don't do this or this. Just try to stay in one place, and we will see if the sound system can catch up here. That's the best I can come up with right now. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next up is Katari Cruz.
So I'll try to follow the instructions as quickly. Good evening to the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Katari Cruz. I live in Annapolis in Hillsmere, and I am here to advocate for public access for rowing at the Homeport facility. Rowing has been part of my life for over 30 years. I am happy and sad to admit. I've been a competitive rower, a youth, an adult, and adaptive coach, and honestly, it aided in my recovery from cancer in 2014. It has been an integral part of my physical and mental well-being almost on a day-to-day basis, and you can ask my other rowing partners sometimes twice a day. When I moved here to Maryland from Illinois, I was welcomed with open arms by the Annapolis Rowing Club and the Annapolis Junior Club. They are inclusive, welcoming, and dedicated people. Our sport is about people power, all people, whether we're facing forward or backwards, and we would like to expand access for this lifelong sport. The additional access for the junior rowing program would not only help expand the club, but also help potential kids go to college because of scholarships and so forth. The diversity and inclusion efforts of US Rowing is something that we are trying to emulate through our club. Not to mention the awareness and involvement in the environmental issues that affect our extensive waterways. And to echo what has already been said by my other club members, you know, part of our situation could be improved if we could put more of our rent or funds towards public access. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Heather Thomas. I guess Heather is not here. Chris Rivera.
Good evening. Chris Rivera, resident of Homeport. Last week in regard to a rowing facility at Homeport Park, County Executive Pittman issued the following statement. Quote, "Neighbors of public parks often oppose improvements that might increase park use," end quote. To the contrary, I'd encourage the public to visit Homeport Farms Park as frequently as possible. I'm glad Mr. Pittman was able to figure out the code, and we look forward to the county upgrading the gate system so more citizens can easily frequent it. The public at large can enjoy the beauty of this park because it's been left as a park for nature, preservation as intended by the D. This is what our community hopes to protect and will fight for. We're not against rowing. It sounds like an amazing sport, very inclusive, the team environment. But this is exactly what the park is not deeded for. A park that remains natural and open for all to enjoy, not a park where special rights are granted to athletic clubs or well-organized special interest groups that want to make it their own. Let's ensure that the use of the park remains fair and equitable for county residents and taxpayers, for the beneficiaries of the D. There's been much confusion and ambiguity on what P567500 will be used for. Our councilwoman has told us that there's no funding, yet we've heard from numerous people in support of such a facility at Homeport Farms. The Homeport Farms Park deed clearly states the property shall not be developed or used for intensive recreational purposes. By definition, team sports such as rowing are considered intensive recreation as they are organized and therefore not permissible by the D. Our community is asking that the county council eliminate any ambiguity and potential infringement of the park's deed in regards to the purposes of this budget item. amend P567500 such that funds explicitly cannot be used for the purposes of expanding or granting any rowing facilities in Homeport. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got just, actually, I'll give out the next six speakers. I'm sorry, I forgot I have a handwritten list here for the folks that signed up this evening. Our next six speakers are Chip Walsh, Adam Wyndham, Bridget Fitzpatrick, Louise Gengler Thomas, Lauren Long, and Randy Jupp. And please remember to state your name and address. For the record, we have two minutes.
My name is Chip Walsh. I'm a 39-year resident of Anaronda County, now living in Campbell's. I'm here to talk to you about Homeport Farms Park and I'll start by admitting that I don't know what I'm talking about. That's a problem. The reason I don't know is because Homeport Farms is not mentioned in the capital improvement program. We have budget items 567400 and 567500. Both mentioned boat houses as items that may be included, but there's no detail. Without documents citing what's included, I'm left to speak to rumors. The rumor is the rowing facility is being considered at Homeport Farms. I'm in favor of Anaronda County offering a facility for rowers, but our rowers need a robust facility. Besides storage area for shells, it should have electric, running water, sewage disposal. It needs to have docks. It needs an access road suitable for maneuvering trailers with 40-foot shells. There are places in the county to put such a facility. Homeport Farms is not one of them. In creating a rowing facility, the public should not lose access to waters where rowers gain access. So wherever the county decides to put a rowing facility, members of the public, like myself, should also be able to access the water on equal footing with the rowers. Rowers often practice before sunrise, after sunset, when most parks are closed. If rowers are allowed access beyond daylight hours, members of the public should have the same access. So really to sum up, three things. Let's put in the budget what we're going to spend the money on. Let's get the rowers a facility and don't put it in Homeport. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Adam Wyndham.
Good evening. I'm Adam Wyndham from Pasadena, Maryland. I'm a father of a young daughter with a severely disabled. Those with special needs or disabilities have historically been to the state and pushed aside, and this is especially true for children with disabilities. If you look back over the last several decades, you will find those with disabilities often have had the way of other civil rights movements. We have often been in the back of the room saying, hey, what about me? And more times than not, we're just toss the leftovers. Look no further than our local parks to find examples of this, where ADA swings being installed without an ADA compliant path to the swing has been a standard practice of this county for some time. What good is an ADA swing if a child who is in a wheelchair or has other walking difficulties cannot traverse the uneven and unstable wood chips to reach the swing? I call on the entire county council to support funding for community park playground assistance to install rubber surfaces to various playgrounds throughout all seven districts of them. To make playgrounds throughout all seven districts more accessible, excuse me. Another example of the special needs community being pushed aside has been in the policies implemented over the last two years. It is widely acknowledged that special education students have been disproportionately affected by the COVID policies in the last two years. This is why supporting the Anaronda County Public Schools budget for special education is critically important. Caring for, educating, and providing services to special needs students and students with disabilities is an extraordinary task, requiring extensive support of multidisciplinary teams, of several educators, and support staff. Providing this increased funding should transform the school system into a system that proactively seeks to make inclusion a standard practice versus the exception. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Bridget Fitzpatrick.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Fitzpatrick and I am the head coach for Annapolis Junior Rowing, or AJR, as well as a public school teacher at Southern Middle School, Co-Bold Dogs. I represent our entire AJR family and here tonight to advocate for public water access for rowing. I am aware that there are no specifics in the budget regarding Homeport Farms Park, but given the recent items in the news and discussions regarding rowing, we felt it necessary to represent here tonight. The rowing community has been a staple in this county for more than 25 years and AJR was created in 2009. We are the only rowing organization for young athletes in Anaronda County and surrounding counties and have served thousands from all walks of life through that time. We have athletes from AACPS, private schools, and homeschool students. We bring athletes into the county from Howard County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Washington DC, and neighboring areas. Almost all of our athletes go onto college, many with scholarships, the armed forces, and workforce after having been challenged by competing in rowing and it has made them better contributors to society. Annapolis Junior Rowing is a nationally recognized rowing community. We continuously send our crews to the U.S. Rowing Youth National Regatta, the highest level of youth competition for rowing, for more than 2,000 competing athletes each spring. We have AJR alumni representing this community all over the country and internationally at different levels of rowing. We had AJR alum represent the United States of America crew that was invited and won the King's Cup at the Royal Henry Regatta on the Tons River in England. We currently grow out of Camp Woodlands in the woods on the South River, and we will soon be outgrowing that space. Therefore, we need public water access for rowing. We continue to be great stewards of the Annapolis community by volunteering, supporting advocacy groups like the Great Shires Walk for Cystic Fibrosis, participating in Independence Day and St. Patrick's Day parades, and many more. Annapolis Junior Rowing is only getting bigger and we need a permanent home. AJR continues to benefit the residents here in Anaronda County by providing equitable opportunities and accessibility to the sport of rowing. Now we need a permanent home from which to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Louise Gengler Thomas.
Thank you. My name is Louise Thomas and I'm from Davidsonville, Maryland. Thank you. I'm here to comment on the budget and Millersville Park. County Executive made a decision to eliminate the Tennis Center project. It's gone. The site and funding have been taken away from tennis and given to the newly named Millersville Park. Despite record funding this year, tennis is the only sport and the only project that $6 million is removed. I'm speaking for tennis, but I'm also speaking for the residents who want recreational programming. Tennis has a lot in common with the rowing community. It's a lifetime sport and it's a sport that's an adapted sport and works with those with disabilities. The Tennis Center project was set to eliminate. Why was it eliminated? Is it because the county could not secure a private partner to pay half the costs? None of the 52 projects require a private partner to share costs. Yes, the tennis lease with the private partner failed to pass the county council, but the project needs and demands remain, the site remain, the funding remain, six years of studies and approvals remain. I get to ask, by what process was there no consideration given to continue this project with or without a partner? There was no open discussion, no communication with the tennis community who had partnered with the county, supported the project with time, money, and resources. The project just discards eight years, testimony, stand-up, studies. With this budget, the county quits. They quit on the tennis community and they quit on a county-wide project to benefit diverse communities. Our neighboring counties have 17 public indoor facilities, each delivering affordable public programings. In Anaronda County, we have none. When the council approves Mr. Pittman's budget, I hope that you all will not let that be an indicator that this council approves the abandonment of the project nor approves the process by which it was eliminated. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Long.
Lauren Long. I'm a resident in Annapolis. I am a literacy teacher at Four Seasons Elementary and I'm here to express my concern about the $10,000 salary exclusion of National Board Certified Literacy Teachers and a blueprint for next year. Not only are we not eligible for the $10,000, but we're also taking a $3,000 pay cut to stay in our positions. There are 26 literacy teachers who are currently excluded and many have already left to go back in the classroom next year, leaving vacancies. There are 78 positions total who are being excluded. Here is just a snapshot of what we do every day. Aside from principals and APs, we are the next in charge in our buildings and are paid the same as teachers. We plan with teachers, push out county initiatives, ensure implementation, and in last data, meet with parents, attend IEP and 504 meetings, co-teach, model lessons, serve as members on the sit team, leadership, CDM, and MINT teams, and often we are test coordinators and backup test coordinators. We are now universal screeners, upholding the Ready to Read Act, testing kids in kindergarten through second grade three times a year. And this data does help us to identify at-risk students and create and teach intervention groups, which isn't in our job description that we do. Two months ago, HR sent a letter stating that we are being excluded from the salary increase. I thought surely this must be an oversight. I called HR along with many of my colleagues and some were told that the county was unaware that we work with students because it wasn't in our job description. We are all doing intervention groups and working with students nonstop, even if it isn't in our job description. Can you imagine me sitting across the table from a parent who has a child who is below level in reading and saying, what are you going to do to help my child? And me saying, oh, I'm sorry, it's not in my job description. No, I would never say that. We always find a way to help students who are in need and provide groups. Did you know that several literacy positions sat vacant last year? And so far, about 15 or more literacy teachers have already left this job for next year. I'm asking you all to come together and please find a way for the county to increase the education budget by $780,000 to compensate just us, just as our peers are, and not force us to take a pay cut. There is really no monetary incentive to stay in these positions right now. From a financial standpoint, it doesn't even make sense.
Ms. Long, that was your two minutes.
Thank you.
Conclude your remarks.
We are in for it, so just please help incentivize this critical, our critical position and help to fund it just like the other unit ones who are National Board Certified. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Randy Jupp.
Good evening. Madam Chair, member of the county council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Randy Jupp, the owner of Jupp's Bus Service and Wilson Bus Service, two bus contractor companies that operate in this county. My family has been in the school bus business for 27 years. As you know, we are facing a severe school bus driver shortage. The school bus contractors and our drivers in attendance are extremely grateful for the bonuses that they receive this year through the ARPA funds, which has essentially increased them by $5 an hour. We appreciate the 10% toll increase for drivers included in the Board of Education budget, but we're concerned, given that this equates to only $2 an hour, meaning our drivers from next year essentially take a pay cut. We're hopeful we'll be able to make up the difference somehow, either through some sort of budget allocation, supplemental budget allocation, or additional ARPA funds. The retention bonuses are working. We are short fewer and fewer drivers as a result, but we can't go back to where we were previously. The prey raises created by these bonuses have to be maintained. We also are very concerned about the bell time changes the Board intends to implement next year. You have written testimony fully outlining those concerns, but in short, it will put additional stress on an already strained system. The schedule changes will equate to a more condensed rate of start times for students, meaning that more drivers will be needed to cover routes that one bus would have been able to cover before. In addition, the school system has bid 25 additional routes, which means additional costs as well as a need for additional drivers. We contractors are your partners in transportation, transporting students across the county, and we are here to tell you that these changes are very likely to make things worse than they were at the beginning of this school year. Despite all best efforts, we are still facing severe driver shortages and now simply not is now not the time to make these changes. We respectfully ask that they be delayed for at least one year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I will call down the next six speakers. I have Chris Sexton, Cindy Klaus, Delores Chappell, Bill Smith, Thomas Buduco, and Kathy And if you're Chris Sexton, you may proceed when you're ready.
That's who I am. Good evening, Madam Chair, county councilman. This is Chris Sexton. Like this much? Perfect. 602 Kent Avenue, Pasadena, Maryland 21122. I am a volunteer football coach for the Buccaneers Athletic Club. I have been for the past 20 years and I've been the club's president for the past 10. We are housed at Sunset Park in the northeast portion of Anaronda County. I'm here on behalf of our executive board and over 1,000 student athletes. Our park is in desperate need for upgrades. The buildings that house our equipment are old and out of date. The two current restroom facilities are outdated and fail to follow ADA guidelines. When I notified Parks and Recs about the facilities, the solution was to add a handicap accessible porta potty 100 yards away. One porta potty and two restroom facilities for over 1,000 athletes, their parents, and fans. Having a porta potty that far away makes it difficult for our visitors and athletes to use facilities that they are entitled to. There are no sidewalks available, which would make access better for those using wheelchairs or walkers. We won't discuss the hot July or August months, on the days or weeks the porta potty doesn't get emptied and it overflows. The bleachers where parents, grandparents, guardians, and siblings watch their favorite athletes play are also not ADA compliant. We added at our own expense handicap accessible parking, however, the service road looks like it belongs in the third wall country. There are currently eight to 10 trees that are dead with branches sometimes 15 feet long weighing over 100 pounds that snap off and come crashing to the ground. It's only a matter of time before a park visitor is struck by falling debris. Field space is at a premium. Although I've been the president for the past 10 years, we aren't included in any changes to the park or its future, making it difficult for our executive board to plan for the future growth of the club. A few months ago, a second field was fenced in. We're not sure why it was fenced in. That was never shared with us. We're not sure why... That was two minutes? Was it really? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a great evening.
Before you step away...
Yes, ma'am.
I know you said it at the very beginning. What's the name of the park?
It's Sunset Park.
Sunset Park.
Yes, ma'am. On Ford Smaller Road.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. That was two minutes?
It really was. It goes by fast.
I've got more. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Cindy Klaus.
Good evening. I am Cindy Klaus, a Woodhome resident since 1989. I grew up in Pasadena and still run my family business on Waterford Road that opened in 1971. I have been in this area a long time and have seen many changes. Prior to Wal-Mart and Creeksdale and Mayneville, the Woodhome community met with county leaders and engineers trying to be proactive to ensure upcoming projects took in consideration our ability to exit Jumper's Hole Road knowing traffic volume would increase. The solution of the traffic light at Wal-Mart offers little help to residents. The timing does not always allow safe passage. If you want to fix this road, you must first identify the real problems. Volume and speed are major factors. Adding a white lane, side, and sidewalk will do nothing to correct the issues. In fact, it will add more distraction at both Woodhome intersections. Putting the Jumper's Hole Road project in go mode with no final scope or design while adding more development nearby a long hill road will bring more volume, which is and has been unacceptable to the Woodhome community. We're asking for a comprehensive plan for improvements addressing these issues. This is not a new request. This is not a new request from Woodhome, which makes me feel like we have been failed by our county leadership. I believe this project is being rushed through just to spend money, and I would appreciate your consideration and careful thought to the facts in this line item. I urge you to vote no on the Jumper's Hole Road funding at this time until a true solution is presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Dolores Chappell.
Good evening, my name is Dolores Chappell. I've been a resident of Woodhome Circle and I moved there in 1961, raised my family there. And Jumper's Hole Road was a small little country road that went from Mountain Road to Ritchie Highway. It was straight in those days before that made a curve. Creekstone was Elkton's Farm. Ashbury was Woods and Field, where we went ice skating on the pond. At the other end on Ritchie Highway was a gas station and a tobacco farm. That road, Jumper's Hole, was adequate for the time. 61 years later, it's not adequate. With the curve in the road, several of our neighbors have ended up with cars taking down their porches, running into their houses, cracking their foundations, ending up in their front yards. One gentleman put a concrete wall up. It's been knocked down. Another house, three houses up on Jumper's, the car went through the yard into the man's garage. So it's dangerous to walk on that road, but a bike path, I can't imagine. I wouldn't walk on it. It just, I don't know what the plan would be to make it safe, but I don't see that there's any room for a bike path. I think it would be way too dangerous. My opinion.
Thank you very much. Next is Bill Smith.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Bill Smith. I live in the Manhattan Beach area of Savanna Park, and I'm also the coordinator for the Chesapeake Paddlers Association, and we're a 700-member kayak club that was founded in Anarona County. And looking through our roster, since we were founded, we've had thousands of Anarona County residents as members of our club. I want to talk about Homeport Farms. We love Homeport Farms. The, the club is ideal, or the park is ideal for launching kayaks, but I am opposed to any rowing center be built there. We're not anti-rowing, but, and I hope they do go, but I do recommend that they follow what the Water Access Committee recommended, that they put it next to an existing ramp or when they build a new ramp for their power boats, that they put a, also a rowing dock in there. And the, and the other thing too, I'm also the son of a quadriplegic, so I sympathize with some of these people saying about access for disabled persons. You cannot make Homeport Farms accessible for disabled persons without rerouting that brand-new path they put in there. So I think it's really a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Thomas Babucco.
Hi, I'm Tom Babucco from 1739 Thonlin's Island Road. A little confused as to what exactly is going on with the rowing, the whole rowing thing. I just read a memo from Pittman that said no one's even considering anything about putting a rowing club in, in the Homeport, in the Homeport Club. I almost left, but then I heard 10 people come up here and talk about how they need a rowing club at the Homeport recreational area. So my question here is, what exactly is being proposed? Reading the context clues and I'm asking, hey, are the rowers asking to leave their personal property at the Homeport rowing club? Or are they trying to make a club to leave their stuff there? This raises a few questions. You know, okay, if you're allowed to bring your kayaks here, how many kayaks am I bringing? How often do I have to use it? Can I leave my kayak there for a year without using it? And more importantly, maybe the better question is, is how is anyone leaving their personal property at a public park in the best interest of the public park? You know, where can I go to the public park and just leave my stuff there forever? Seems kind of weird. It seems like kayakers are already allowed to use the Homeport Park, right? They can bring their kayak and they can leave it and they can take it with them. But it seems like that's not enough now that they want to build a whole facility there to keep their stuff at a public park, which is specifically what's not allowed in the deed. These intensive uses specifically called out is not allowed. It's really just supposed to be a recreational area. So I think rowing's great. I think that everyone should be able to row. I love to row. I think that anyone should be able to, but I don't think that anyone should be able to bring their kayak and leave it at a public place. You know, if you want to go row, go row. Bring your stuff back. Take it back in your car, bring it back to your house. Right? Makes sense?
Thank you very much. Next is Kathy Hall.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Hall. I live in Annapolis, 185 Green Holly Drive, up 21409. I am here speaking to ask you to please fully fund the education budget as proposed. And sitting here tonight, I have never been prouder to be a citizen of Anarona County. I now know why my mom and dad moved us here. I went to Quarterfield Elementary School, Corcoran Junior High, graduated Glemberg High School in 1980. My children went to Glendale Elementary, then they transferred to Cape St. Clair Elementary, 93rd Middle School, and graduates abroad next. They're Bruins. As a, as a student, I, I know I received a world-class education here. I am, I understand, and I do love our community college. I was so tickled to hear that we're still nationally up there. We are really amazing. We have professors from all over. I'm also, I was also very deeply influenced by my growing up here, and I am one of your special educators. I am, I teach multiple, multiple intensive needs students, or you may hear it now called the ACC, Alternate Curriculum Classroom. And without our wonderful support staff, our counselors, our literacy teachers, our, I just can't even imagine doing my job without them. And our support staff is just amazing. Our job in a multiple intensive classroom, it requires, it's almost like part medical as well. We have feeding protocols, diapering, and this goes from, you know, young ages all the way up to high schoolers. So I do ask that you continue to support us, continue to fully fund us, and especially the teachers that you, and I call them teachers, you heard from National Board Certified. What you may not know, they see 80 hours or more of our students during the day, and many of them I, I believe have been pulled into classrooms during the shortages right now. So they are teaching and they deserve what they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'm going to call down the last two speakers, and if there's anyone else in the room who did not sign up before the meeting who would like to speak, I would ask you to come down at this time as well. I have Haley Sidnuski and Daniel Keg. And Haley, you may head directly to the microphone.
Good evening, council members. My name is Haley Sidnuski, and I live at 102 Dark Sky Crossing in the Creekstone Woodhouse community. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the project to improve Jumper's Hole Road between Ritchie Highway and Mountain Road. I use this corridor as part of my daily commute as well as for bike access to the BNA trail on weekends. During commuting hours, traffic to get in and out of my community is quite dense. For example, tonight it took four minutes just to make one left turn out of my neighborhood, and this is not an isolated incident. Additionally, the shoulders of Jumper's Hole Road is far too narrow for street pedestrian and bike access. Whether it's folks, folks like myself who bike to the trails for exercise, or community members who travel by foot for groceries out of necessity, something has to be done to ensure that our entire community can remain safe, accessible, and active. Please support the accessibility and safety of Jumper's Hole Road through these improvements, including the addition of improvements at intersections, pedestrian and bike transit paths, as well as any other safety measures to make sure that our community members can travel safely. This project is long overdue, and without proactive intervention, our roadways will only get worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Daniel Keg.
Hello, council members. My name is Daniel Keg, and I also live in Creekstone Townhome Communities in Pasadena. I'm here today to ask your support in favor of the bill funding Jumper's Hole Road improvements. When I began home searching in Maryland, I was drawn to my area because of the proximity to Ritchie Highway, where a plethora of shopping centers, small businesses, and the BNA trail make the community shut. Ever since moving in, Jumper's has been the road I take to enjoy the amenities I have prescribed and to go basically anywhere else. Due to the narrow road that connects residents in my area and the many off-of-Mountain Road to Ritchie, the traffic on Jumper's connecting the residential area to business plazas is busy, constant, and clogged many times a day. For my neighbors and I, this created many occasions where turning into Jumper's Hole Road in either direction has created near accidents, given narrow window to merge without the presence of any traffic control devices. It is worse for bikers and pedestrians. Parts of the road have shoulders so narrow, they sometimes trespass on the edge of someone's yard to create a safe distance with the traffic. This project aims to provide funding that will allow extensive research to address, first of all, traveler's safety, be it a motorist or a pedestrian, and potentially create ways to alleviate the heavy traffic during peak hours. This project has been overdue and given the scope of this project that will span several years if implemented. I respectfully request, council members, that the bill be passed without any further delay. I believe that this project will improve quality of life for many beyond just the residents near Jumper's Hole Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, you're, you're, can't see that, you're, you're all finished. Thank you, Mr. Keg. The additional folks sitting in the front row who'd like to speak, I can't quite see you because of length of my eyes. Whoever would like to speak, come on down to the microphone. You're all so polite, just fighting over. You want to select first.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sylvia Donovan, and I'm a resident at Homeport Farm Park. I moved in in 2007, and so it was one of the first homes built in the community. So I've been able to see the development of the park itself. And it hasn't changed much, and I think that it's part of the beauty of it, that it, it hasn't changed, and that's what the intended uses for the citizens who use the park on a daily basis, and it's wonderful, people coming in and out of our neighborhood, out of the park. Listening to everybody, you know, shocked that there's not a accessible community rowing center already, that doesn't make a lot of sense, as it seems to provide so much good for all ages, and I want to get my kids in. Homeport just isn't the place. And also listening to the concerns about Jumper's Hole Road, I'm not sure how many rowers have been to Homeport Farm Park and understand it's difficult to get there. We require, coming from Annapolis, a U-turn that's very difficult and requires a lot of patience, and there's not a lot of space to turn, maybe four or five cars, you know, off of Route 2 where people are going 50 miles an hour. That could be a huge concern for an organization trying to get people, you know, in and out of the community. So I just ask for that consideration, and I hope that they find a place that's really great for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And whoever's next, come up, say your name and add us for the record, and you'll have your two minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Katie Crabtree. I'm also a resident of the Homeport community, and I came here tonight to express concern in regards to budget item P567500 for the boat ramp development. Parks and Recs has communicated with members of our community that Homeport Farms Park is not compatible with any plans for a rowing club. Likewise, our councilwoman has also stated that there is no such funding to support any rowing facility in Homeport. We hope this is true, and we hope the county remains committed to protecting the park as it was deeded to the citizens for the county for nature preservation and restoration purposes. As you've heard from the previous testimony, however, various rowing clubs have been persistently advocating to expand rowing at Homeport Farms Park. Rowing is a team sport and is not consistent with the park's deed, as it is not passive. The recreational activities, team building, and inclusiveness of rowing clubs should be commended, but I, I ask you not to be short-sighted and waste good taxpayer money on a haphazard solution. If the county genuinely deems that this is a good use of taxpayer money, the club will need a proper facility, which just unfortunately is not in Homeport Farms. We ask the county to amend P567500 such that funds cannot be used to build or expand rowing facilities in Homeport Farms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, come on down. Say your name and add us for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
I think that'll be good. Okay. Hi, Christopher Schmidt, on the, I'm the... I'm not going to move my head. Talking, talking, okay. Hopefully it's working, working. Hi, Christopher Schmidt. I live at 20 Hunting Court in Edgewater. I'm the president of the Homeport Homeowners Association. I'm here representing the neighbors of the Homeport community as well as surrounding communities of Poplar Point, Will Eleanor, neighbors along Route 2, across Church Creek, on Woods Road, and Child's Point. Thank you to the council for allowing me to speak. I'm here to talk about the limiting deed of Homeport Park. At its inception, the park was designed to be and remain a passive-use park. This idea was not to limit the use by the general public, who at present enjoy taking walks, having picnics, running, biking, bird watching, kayaking, fishing, swimming, and many other activities that the park currently allows. Rowing is an organized sport and therefore not passive. I would implore anyone here to visit the park, spend some time there, and take in the natural landscape that makes it truly unique. The more important aspect of the limiting deed is that the park was designed to remain passive to protect the critical areas of the park. Those are the shoreline grassy areas and the many trees that have been planted as part of the reforestation project owned by the county. Any and all changes being proposed would most certainly affect the critical areas of the park. This is precisely why in 2011, as part of the deed, the Homeport Homeowners Association was granted exclusive enforcement rights to make sure that the county upheld their commitment to honor the deed. It states, and I quote, "The grantor, its successors, and assigns shall have standing to enforce the covenants contained herein at law and in equity." In closing, I'm here to tell you that the Homeport Homeowners Association fully intends to uphold our responsibility to ensure that Homeport Park remains passive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And next speaker, come on down.
For the record, Paul Higgins, resident 8084 Woodhome Circle.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
You spoke at our, um, you spoke...
I attended the hearing representing Woodhome Circle Community Association as an officer. Tonight, I'm here as a resident.
Your call, Senator. You may proceed.
Thank you. So... So I'm here tonight asking, everything you hear Creekstone say about Woodhome Circle and the residents say is correct, okay? We've got a problem that needs to be worked on. I also will point out that Creekstone does have access to shopping and things of that nature without going on Woodhome. They actually have access out of Creekstone through the back behind my BJ's. They cut a second entrance in the development. Matter of fact, the gym, Planet Fitness, is back there. So I don't want you to think that their only way in and out is on Jumper's Hole as Woodhome. We are really not opposed to the bill in the way it gives the county the ability to move forward with a design, okay? What we are opposed against is it gives the county funding to act unilaterally without coming back before this body. We are having a hearing May twenty-third on a feasibility study on a project that this bill is supposed to fund. We don't even know what the project is, but yet we're asking you to vote on it. So I would ask that we find a way to trim that bill down, let the county move forward with the design, let's figure out what we're going to do, and then bring it back before the council to be funded. But to fund the whole thing as it's currently in there, I would have to oppose. Thank you, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll make one final call. Come on down. If you'd like to speak.
Yes.
You've got your two minutes.
I think it's okay, right? Good evening, council members. My name is Travis Houston. I currently live at six oh three Clear Blue Lane in the Creekstone Village Two community. I'm on the H O E board and represent that community. I'm an Army veteran. I've lived in Anarona County since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm sure as you can all agree, we have a sense of community that means that we all have a feeling of fellowship with our neighbors, share common attitudes, interests, and goals to enhance the community we all live in. I correct pressure for support on the Jumper's Hole budget item. As we all know, the community is only going to grow and expand, and the constant influx of traffic and people to that area, we need to make sure the community infrastructure grows with it. The Jumper's Hole enhancement and its addition of walkways, bike paths, street signs, turn signals, et cetera, will only enhance that for the community. We do have an extra way to leave our community, but that also allows to maybe in a more unsafe area because it's not a designated road. The addition of the traffic lights, speed cameras, and properly-designed lanes will also resolve the traffic issues, right? If we don't correct them. So all I ask is, is don't let your constituents play Frogger on that road and passive budget so that we can have a safe way of passage and increase all of our home values and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll make one final call for speakers, and I think I see a speaker coming down, so. Speaker, name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Holly Fiderline, Odenton. I'm here, I was the first school counselor to become an MBCT in Maryland in two thousand and six. I've served as a professional learning facilitator, meaning the person who helps other people achieve for the last fifteen years. I just finished tonight helping library media services, career and technical educators who are working on their national boards to be able to submit. The deadline is midnight tonight, save a lot of stressed people out there. But the fact that I'm able to help other people achieve shows that the standards and the procedures are the same for all of us. No matter what the cert area, the expectations, that I know my students, I know what I teach, I'm a reflective learner, I work in collaborative communities with other professionals, is the same. No matter if someone is teaching about business, or a school counselor, or a literacy teacher, we all have the same procedures that we need to follow. MSDU updated the blueprint interpretation of eligible MBCTs after the budget left the board, so the board didn't have a chance to be able to fix the problem that then MSDU created. The state statute that preceded the blueprint says that it has to be a teacher of record. So because literacy teachers and school counselors are not considered teachers of record, we've been left off the list of people who would achieve or get that ten-thousand-dollar bonus. So it's really a technical issue that needs a one-year fix, because I'll be working with the Maryland School Counselors Association and our literacy teachers to work on the legislation that needs to fix the blueprint, because I teach every day. I teach students how to cope with anxiety, depression, parents who are incarcerated and sick. I teach parents how to access resources. I teach children how to get along with each other. I teach every single day, all day long. So there's no reason why school counselors and literacy teachers should not be included on that list. Thank you.
I would speak in the background, please. At this time, any other individuals like to come down and take their two minutes? We're here only twice every year for this particular purpose, but hearing about, hearing from the budget, although we'll always take your emails. Seeing no one moving in the audience. The public hearing, where do my little notes go? The May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-three budget is now closed. Is there any other item of business my colleagues would like to discuss at this time? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second, I'll stick her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until nine AM on Wednesday, June first, twenty twenty-two, when we will meet virtually for the county auditor's feedback on the proposed FY twenty-three budget. Remember to check the county website for important information and updates on our meetings. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We really appreciate hearing all of your feedback on the budget, and we will, I think everyone here will take it to heart.